In commission meeting for eight twenty-ninth to order, could we have a determination of a quorum, roll call please?
Chairperson Sattler.
Here.
Vice Chair Borders.
Here.
Commissioner Doors.
Here.
Commissioner Aschwein.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner Tingle.
Here.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Here.
A quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Borders, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure.
Close your eyes, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Before we get started, just want to announce if any of you are here for item E six, which is TSM nineteen oh five four, for the subdivision potential map on railroad, that item is going to be continued until June twenty-fourth, so I didn't want you having to wait around to get to that point, if we're not, we won't be handling that tonight, it's going to be continued to next month. Okay, moving on. Public comment, the public is invited at this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matters that is not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Is there any public comment at this time? Feel free to come forward, sir, state your name.
My name is Daniel Thompson, I'm a resident of the Timberline area, and I'm just here on items E three and E four, to give my support for the change in the zoning from the, was it conservative, single-family one-acre lots, to designate open space, just to say that the, I live right there at the foot and see everything that's happening on the other side, and the use of the public and the citizens of Carson City is constant between hikers, bikers, and runners. I am also a member of the Carson City Cab for the Man's Wildlife, and I've been in conversations with Mike Scott, who the regional biologist, and that area also designated is a area that the resident mule deer and demeritary herd use on a regular basis, and I believe that such a decision is good for the community and the wildlife within the, our area. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment at this time? You may come forward.
It's on the agenda.
If the item's on the agenda, we will be addressing these at the time of, there's comment on every item.
Okay, perfect.
When we get to each of the items, so, all right, thank you. Any possible action approval of the minutes from April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, any corrections, or?
Yes. On page three, there's a whole item missing. The discussion and action for the dog facility is not contained on the, in the minutes.
Mr. Chair, the clerk has mentioned that there is an error in the minutes, and I'll recommend that you not take action on them, given what's been presented, and the clerk will work on them, and will bring them to your next meeting.
Wonderful, then we'll address them at the next meeting. Okay, moving on, modification of agenda, Lee, is there any need for modification, or any changes?
No modifications, we'll take things in order, as you've discussed with the planning manager, there are a couple items on the agenda that were two different items, deal with the same property, and we'll open up together, discuss them together.
Okay, moving on, we have one of those items right away, E one, MPA one-nine-dash-zero-seven-zero, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the request for an amendment to the master plan to redesignate the conservation reserve private to open space on twenty-acre parcel located north of, side of Highway fifty west, APN zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-one-dash-eight-one. Part of that also is E two, ZMA one-nine-dash-zero-six-nine, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the request for an amendment to the zoning map, to change the zoning from conservation reserve to public regional on twenty-acre parcel located on the north side of Highway fifty west, APN zero-zero-seven-zero-five-one-dash-eight-one. Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the chair outlined, this master plan request is to amend the master plan from conservation reserve to private open space. The conservation reserve might intuitively feel like the right designation, but what it actually means is it's primarily for open lands agricultural ranching and single-family residential, whereas the open space designation is for publicly owned and accessible lands preserved by the city. The city did acquire this land in January two thousand nineteen for open space. It's a twenty-acre site located on the north side of Highway fifty, so if you look on the screen, it's a triangular piece that you'll see is designated on the master plan as conservation reserve, proposed to be designated for open space. In terms of the zoning, the zoning right now is conservation reserve, which from, in the zoning ordinance, that identifies the outlying lands that may be developed in the future when infrastructure is available, so sort of like a holding zone, if you will, for private land, whereas the proposed designation of public regional is for publicly owned facilities and uses whose main purpose is to sustain wide regional needs. When you consider amending the master plan, you have to consider the four findings of fact and make those in the affirmative. Staff has reviewed those findings in the staff report, and we have made those findings in the affirmative. With respect to amending the zoning map, you're reviewing three findings of fact and need to make those findings in the affirmative. Staff did review those in the staff report and were able to make those in the affirmative. Only the Board of Supervisors can amend the master plan or the zoning map, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So the staff is recommending that you recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. I'm happy to go more in-depth than any of this, and Ann Bolinger, the city's open space manager, who was responsible in large part for this acquisition, is present, if you'd like to talk to her about the twenty acres or any of the objectives in that acquisition. Thank you.
Thank you, Hope, any questions for staff? Seeing none, Ms. Bolinger, do you like, any questions for Ms. Bolinger?
I wouldn't mind knowing what they're gonna do with it.
Okay, then we'll ask, would you mind coming forward then, please, ma'am? Thank you. For the record, just state your name.
Ann Bolinger, open space administrator, good evening.
Commissioner Doors, for the record, I guess I was just curious as to what the plans were and what the purpose of the acquisition was, just so we could wrap our heads around it.
Great question. The open space program was created in nineteen ninety-six with a ballot initiative by the residents of Carson City to approve a sales tax for the acquisition of open space, and our priority areas include hillsides, such as the two items in front of you tonight, the river corridor agricultural lands and trails, and so this meets most of those criteria except for agricultural, and as you can see on the, on the map, the parcel above this, we acquired in about two thousand six also for open space, it was among our first acquisitions, and we currently have been referring to this property as Horse Creek Ranch, but over the next few months, we will go through an official naming process. So, looking ahead to the future, it will remain open space, minimal development, hopefully a trail linkage between Clear Creek and Kings Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Public comment, anyone wish to come forward on this item at this time? Comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion, further discussion or a motion?
I move to adopt resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-PC-dash-R-dash-one, recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of MPA-dash-nineteen-dash-zero-seven-zero, a master plan amendment to change the land use designation from conservation reserve private to open space on a twenty-acre parcel located on the north side of Highway fifty east, APN zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-one-dash-eight-one, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Aschwein. Seconds, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven, zero. Commissioner Aschwein, second.
For the record, Commissioner Tingle said Highway fifty east, it's actually Highway fifty west.
Does it say west in here, or east?
Yes.
Sorry.
Do you want to continue?
Yes. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZMA-dash-nineteen-dash-zero-six-nine, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from conservation reserve to public regional on property located on the north side of Highway fifty west, APN zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-five-one-dash-eight-one, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tingle, we have a second by Commissioner Aschwein, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Again, seven, zero. Thank you. Moving on, item E three and E four, MPA-dash-one-nine-dash-zero-six-seven, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the request for an amendment to the master plan to redesignate from conservation reserve private to open space, one hundred and eighty-seven acres located south of Timberline, APN zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-nine-one-dash-six-six, and as part of that also, item E four, ZMA-dash-one-nine-dash-o-six-nine, for possible action discussion, possible action regarding a request for an amendment to the zoning map to change the zoning from conservation reserve and single-family one-acre planned unit development to public community on two parcels totaling two hundred and six acres located south of Timberline, APN zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-nine-one-dash-six-six, and APN zero-zero-seven-dash-two-nine-three-dash-two-nine. Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You got a preview of this in public comment. So, in terms of the master plan amendment, the master plan amendment is for a hundred and eighty-seven acre parcel, it's the larger of the two parcels on the board, and this is to redesignate it from conservation reserve to open space, which I just kind of explained the difference between those designations. In terms of the zoning map amendment, the zoning map amendment is for two parcels as opposed to one parcel. In terms of the master plan to go back, you'll see existing master plan, the smaller pieces already designated as open space, probably when the planned unit development was done, it was designated as open space, so the entire area will become open space. In terms of the zoning, the larger area is zone conservation reserve, which we just talked about, with the smaller area being zoned, single-family one-acre, which is for single-family development. The proposed zoning would be for both of them to be designated as public conservation. The city, the city acquired this land in October of two thousand eighteen for open space, the rationale for both requests is similar to what I just outlined in the item previously. Again, when considering the master plan amendment, there are four findings of fact, when considering the zoning map amendment, there are three findings of fact. In both cases, the staff was able to make all of the findings in the affirmative, only the Board of Supervisors can amend the master plan and the zoning map, so the Planning Commission is making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. You do need to make your recommendations to separate actions, as Commissioner Borders had mentioned earlier, and I'm happy to go more in-depth on anything, and Ann Bolinger, the open space administrator, I called her the open space manager, but the open space administrator is present if there are any questions. Thank you.
Hope, that smaller section, when was that acquired by the city? I did, probably saw that and read over it.
My understanding is both acquisitions were in October two thousand eighteen.
Any questions for staff?
Me.
Commissioner Borders.
Hope, as we talked about earlier, if you look at the zoning map, the area on Westwood in the Timberline area, looks like it's also included in the zoning change, and it, I don't know that it, that area has ever been zoned, single-family one-acre, and I guess the question is, the little notch up there, should it not be, single-family one-acre and not, public community or open space?
I think Commissioner Borders and I discussed this after the packet went on before the meeting, and the concern is the lots that you see just north of the subject property are zoned for conservation reserve, which seems not like a mapping error, if you will, because they are lots, they're residential lots, and so I think what Commissioner Borders is pointing out is that we probably need to take a look at this area and see if the zoning is syncing up with, with what we're looking at for uses, much like later in your, in your agenda, we'll have on Dean Court, and to see what makes sense in terms of zoning in that area. When we look at the master plan, existing master plan, we're in good shape, but then when we get into the zoning, somehow the lines kind of squared off instead of following property lines, so I'm gonna, it's noted, but that area with those lots is not subject to this, to what's before you today, but I think it's a good point that you've brought up.
No, I wouldn't recommend that we not take action on it, I'm just saying that it's another place where we need to fix something.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, any questions for Ms. Bolinger? Commissioner Doors? Thank you.
Ms. Wellinger, given that this one is public community, and the last one was public regional, what are, same question, what are the plans with this acquisition?
For the record, Ann Bolinger, open space, open space administrator, I might ask, Hope Sullivan, to help me with public community versus public regional, I think might be the location where they are in the community, but both of them are for public designations. The use is similar, open space as well and trails, and in fact, this coming Saturday, on June first, it is National Trails Day, we will be hosting event right up on this property near the water tanks, so everyone is invited to come up. The mayor will give a proclamation for National Trails Day, and we will do some interpretive walks and some trail reconstruction. When this property came to the Open Space Advisory Committee for consideration, it was because it was for sale, with a big for sale sign, right in Ash Canyon, right near the water tanks, our trail community jumped into action, came to the Open Space Advisory Committee, this room was filled with over a hundred people, asking for, for the Open Space Advisory Committee to save this property, because there was a whole network of existing trails, and had this been developed, likely those trails would have been closed off to the public.
Other questions for Ms. Bolinger? Commissioner?
Hi, I would just like to say thank you to the Open Space Committee for pulling this one out, because I was one of those people that looked up there, and when they decided prior to putting up the for sale sign, they came in with a track hoe up through that creek and just decimated it, and so, you know, I would definitely like to be on the record as thinking this was probably one of the best acquisitions of open space, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you again. Public comment, anyone from the public wish to comment on this item at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for further discussion or a motion? Do the motion?
Not that I feel strongly, okay. I move the adoption of resolution number two-zero-one-nine-dash-PC-dash-R-two, recommending the Board of Supervisors approval of MPA-dash-one-nine-dash-zero-six-seven, a master plan amendment to change the land use designation from conservation reserve private to open space on a one-eighty-seven acre parcel located south of Timberline, APN number zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-nine-one-dash-six-six, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
We have a motion by Commissioner Preston, we have a second, second by Commissioner Aschwein. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? carries seven, zero. Would you like to continue?
I move to recommend the Board of Supervisors approval of ZMA-dash-one-nine-dash-zero-six-six, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from conservation reserve and single-family one-acre planned unit development to public community on two parcels totaling two hundred and six acres, located south of Timberline, APNs zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-nine-one-dash-six-six, and zero-zero-seven-dash-two-nine-three-dash-two-nine, based on the findings contained on the staff report.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Doors, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Seven, zero again, thank you. Moving on, agenda item E five, ZMA-dash-one-nine-dash-zero-six-eight, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the request for amendment to the zoning map, and to change the zoning from limited industrial to general commercial on nine properties located at three-two-zero-five Retail Drive, three-two-two-five Retail Drive, three-two-five-zero Retail Drive, nine-oh-nine Hot Springs Road, two-one-eight-five Market Street, three-three-oh-five College Parkway, and three-two-zero-zero College Parkway, APNs zero-zero-two-dash-seven-five-two-dash-oh-two, one-four, one-seven, oh-seven, and oh-eight.
And one-eight.
And one-eight. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to point out, there was a typographical error in the APNs, the APN should read, and I'll just go back to that slide, it's correct on my slide, zero-zero-two-seven-five-five-one-oh, and zero-zero-two-seven-five-five-nine, it is not seven-nine-five. We have confirmed that the noticing was handled properly, that the addresses appear in the notice are correct, and that our maps are correct, and so I've consulted with Ben, and he's advised that we may go forward, although there has been typographical error. The Planning Commission included this item in the master plan update for land use mapping corrections. The master plan designation of these nine, nine properties is community, regional, commercial. The properties have developed consistent with the master plan, consisting of commercial and office uses, yet the zoning is limited industrial. The proposed zoning is general commercial to create master plan consistency. The staff has confirmed this will not create any non-conforming uses. When you consider an amendment to the master plan, you need to review the three findings of fact. Staff has reviewed the findings of fact and believes they can be made in the affirmative. Again, only the Board of Supervisors can amend the zoning map, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So the staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the zoning map amendment, and I'm happy to go into more detail. I will say that this, this request and the associated noticing generated a lot of phone calls, but once I talked to property owners, realtors, property managers about it, they, they were okay with it, and it made sense, but we do believe this is an important commercial area for the northeast section of the city, and it should, per the master plan, stay commercial as opposed to developing as industrial. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Aschwein.
So, Hope, was, this was just a staff initiative to make the zoning correction?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
If I can clarify, it was included in the Planning Commission's annual master plan report as a mapping correction, that report did go before the Board of Supervisors, I have the date in here, but it did go before the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors did accept that, and so this, and also the previous, the area around Timberline, those two items are before you because they were included in the master plan mapping corrections, as was Dean Court. The very first one, I don't think we knew about when you did your master plan annual report, because it was more of a recent acquisition.
Public comment on this item, does anyone wish to speak on these, this item? If not, we'll bring it back for further discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for ease on the motion, I don't believe that you need to include the APNs, I think you can cut that out of the motion, and it would still be sufficient, just to make it easier on everyone.
Shorter to read, as well.
I'd make a motion.
Ms. Aschwein.
I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZMA-dash-one-nine-dash-zero-six-eight, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from limited industrial to general commercial on nine properties located at thirty-two-oh-five Retail Drive, thirty-two-twenty-five Retail Drive, thirty-two-fifty Retail Drive, nine-oh-nine Hot Springs Road, twenty-one-eight-five Market Street, thirty-three-oh-five College Parkway, and thirty-two-hundred College Parkway, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And Commissioner Borders, seconds. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Moving on, item E six, subject TSM-dash-one-nine-dash-zero-five-four, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a tentative subdivision map to create a hundred-and-three-lot, single-family residential subdivision within Alapa Ranch specific plan area, and within Blackstone Ranch specific plan area zoned, single-family six thousand, and located at the east end of Railroad Drive and Solomon Road, APN zero-one-zero, zero-five-dash-zero-five-one-dash-four-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I am recommending continuation of this item, also, I want to let the commission know that we were able to get letters out to everyone who was initially notified of the item, advising that staff would be requesting a continuation to the meeting of June twenty-sixth. So when you don't see people here, it's because we were able to get those letters out to them with a date certain, and we feel comfortable we'll be able to bring that forward on June twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this? Public comment, any public comment on this item? Otherwise, we'll bring it back for discussion or a motion, and I, I'll make a motion. I move to continue tentative map, TSM-dash-one-nine-dash-zero-five-four, to the Planning Commission meeting of June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second? Ms. Aschwein, seconds, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Moving on, agenda item E seven, agenda for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the request for abandonment of public right-of-way known as a portion of Pinto Street located east of Solomon Road and located south of four-one-one North Solomon Road.
This is a request to abandon portion of Pinto Street, which is comprised of a twenty-five-foot wide access easement, with a ten-foot wide roadway easement superimposed upon it, and a twenty-foot wide city-owned right-of-way right next to it to yield fifty feet. This is what's called a paper street, meaning it shows up on paper, but it's never been improved, so if you drove out there, you probably couldn't find it, because it's, hasn't been improved. There are easements along Solomon, which are proposed to be, or are, we're recommending retention of those easements along Solomon, so with the abandonment of this portion of roadway, we'd want to make sure that the document showed retention of any easements that are perpendicular to it and fronting on Solomon. When you consider a right-of-way abandonment, you're considering seven findings. Staff has reviewed those findings, and we've been able to find them in the affirmative. been able to find them in the affirmative. The Board of Supervisors is authorized to abandon the right-of-way. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the board. So the staff is recommending that you recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. Not sure if I have an applicant here. Yes, I do. Okay, sorry, I didn't recognize you. So we do have an applicant and I'm happy to go more in-depth on anything or answer any questions.
Hope, this would be then in the sage area, whatever, right next to the wall of the church parking lot, correct?
Right, just to the south of the Church of Latter Day Saints near Lampa West.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Boarders?
Hope, it says in our documents that the abandonment will go to the property, what is that, to the south? Not not the 4179, but the property to the south, because the diagram, the way it's shaded, almost makes it look like it's going the other way.
Okay, the actual documents that will be recorded are clear. The way it works is wherever the the right-of-way was extracted from is where it returns to. And so that's why that research was done and Odyssey Engineering did the research on that and worked with our city engineer in Stephen Potte to validate that that was how the how it should be dispensed of, if you will.
Yeah, that was the interpretation I got. I just wanted to make sure that there's nothing in the record that people would look at and say, that's not what you meant.
We'll double-check the recorded documents to make sure they're clear because we spend a lot of time clarifying that with Odyssey Engineering to make sure that we weren't splitting it down the middle, but it was indeed 100% going to the larger property because that's where it was extracted from.
Which would be probably when that, before that was developed, that was all Lampa property at one point before the church and that was developed. Any other questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant? Or does the applicant wish to comment or add anything to what Hope is?
There's recommendations here.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Mike?
There you go. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Justin Moore with Odyssey Engineering and I'm a professional land surveyor in the state of Nevada.
Sir, and there are the conditions of approval, the five conditions. You're fine with all those?
Yes, sir, I am.
Great. Any questions for the applicant? We just had to get a confirmation. Thank you, sir. All right.
Thank you.
Public comment on this item?
Motion?
Seeing none, we can bring it back for a motion or further discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Doris?
I move to recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve AB one nine dash zero, AB dash one nine dash zero four six, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner S. Wine?
Aye.
Carrie's? Thank you. Moving on. Item E eight, SUP dash one nine dash zero four four, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a special use permit to allow a childcare facility on property zone general commercial, GC, located at 200 East Winnie Lane, Suite 288 to 298, APN zero zero two dash zero seven two dash oh one. Yes?
NRS eight, two eight one A four two zero requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from voting if I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private commitment, I'm a commercial real estate agent and I represent the applicant for this project and receive compensation for my work. I believe as a reasonable person in my position, would be materially affected by this commitment in a private capacity. Therefore, I believe I have a disqualifying conflict and will be recusing myself from this matter and will join the applicant in the audience.
Thank you, Commissioner Preston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the Chair mentioned, the applicant's seeking a special use permit for a childcare facility in the general commercial zoning district. I posted the site location on the board. You'll see it's in the shopping center at 200 Winnie Lane. The applicant is looking at the property that is in the northeast corner of that shopping center and the outdoor play area is proposed along Lone Mountain Drive. The applicant is proposing 53 children, ages six weeks old to five years old. The actual number of children will be determined by the State of Nevada Childcare Licensing Program. The applicant is proposing hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. This is important to the staff because there is residential across the street on Lone Mountain where the outdoor play area is proposed to be, but we don't believe that those hours would be in any type of conflict with a residential use over there. The Planning Commission is authorized to issue a special use permit upon making the seven required findings of fact in the affirmative. Staff has reviewed those findings and we are recommending approval. I'm happy to go in-depth on any of this or, and I'll mention the applicant, Kristin Damarra with Terry Preston, are present. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
Ms. Press, staff? Seeing none. Would you state your name?
Hi, I'm Kristin Damarra with Community Service, can you hear me? Is this on? I'm Kristin Damarra with Community Services Agency. Excited to be here again, hopefully to get this approved. We're ready to go with kids. I just want to state that we are able to meet the recommended conditions of approval, so we are good on our end.
You're fine with all the conditions of the...
Yes, we are.
Eight conditions of approval. Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner S. Wine?
Just one question. On the site plan submitted, it for the playground, the playground area that's between the two buildings, there's a raised planter in there. Are you going to keep that there and somehow utilize that or are you going to remove that?
We will probably remove that.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just over there today, actually. The area playground on Lone Mountain, that's all a nice grassed area there. That's all will be fenced, I would imagine, if required, I would think, for fencing, et cetera.
Yes.
Thank you. And drop-off area, they just going to be able, obviously the way it's situated, they can right through the lot, pull in front, drop off, and then that's what I was figuring.
Yes.
Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Doris?
Yeah, Commissioner Doris, for the record, the outdoor playground on the grassy area, it doesn't look, I mean, I can see in the in your proposed, the proposed plan, there's no drawing of a new door in or out, so, but the fences kind of overlap. So am I understanding this right, that the access to both playgrounds will be the one door out of the 924-square-foot area?
So there is a fence that goes there like you saw and there is an access gate there that will have access to go through that fence as well.
Are you going to keep those areas separated?
Yes.
So the outdoor playground on, I'm sorry, Lone Mountain Street or whatever, that the, on the east side there, the only access to that is going to be the gate coming from the playground in between the two buildings?
We'll probably have, keep that access and do a gate on the other side for exit as well. So do like a gate in the fenced area that we have as well.
Out, out to the alleyway?
Yeah, hold on. So it's this one.
It's this one right here and it goes out to, yeah, there is an alleyway that is there. One of the restrictions, one of the restrictions that we have is there's a fire hydrant there and there's a couple of other different things. And so we're working with the engineering department to determine exactly what, how they would like to have it configured.
They've got a door in here.
No, no.
On this run, there's a door.
Okay. So is the hand-drawn door going to be added in there?
So originally in that classroom, we had to have two exits to that because if we had over, I believe it was 10 children, but we're not making that classroom as big. We're doing less children in there, so we're not going to have to add that additional door. So there won't be an extra door there.
Okay. I guess, I don't know, maybe I'm overly concerned. I know it happened last time. I want to approve this one. But I just, it seems like that one door, and I didn't even see the hand-drawn drawer on there earlier, door on there earlier when I was looking, just seems like the one door is a long ways around a big corner from that outdoor playground with no windows on that side of the building.
Oh, there are windows.
Yeah, I, okay, well, I don't, I don't know. It seems, it seems a little far. So that's what my concern is. I'll just leave it at that and see what everyone else has to say.
Well, and I'm sure, obviously, this has met fire and all that as far as number of exits, et cetera, et cetera. So including, that would also cover the play area as well, I would.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, the fire code, I mean, it's an outdoor playground and they're concerned with exits. I'm not, I'm not talking about fire code. I mean, I'm looking at the picture here and you got these windows here, but I'm just talking about the door seems pretty, everything seems pretty far away to a pretty isolated playground there, is my only concern. I mean, and I guess what I'm wondering is, would it be possible for you guys to put a door in where you have the hand-drawn one, was what I was thinking, pretty much right there, put an exit entrance for ease of access for the chaperones to get in and out of that playground?
I can, yeah. I can do that.
Can we add that as a condition?
Hmm.
Let me rephrase. I would like to add that as a condition, please.
Anyone in the playground, they'd be supervised. Yeah, there's going to be, someone who works there would be out in the playground.
At all times, they have a chaperone in that portion of the playground?
Oh, absolutely. There has to be two staff members with the children at all times.
Out, okay.
Outside, yes.
In both sides. So it's not, okay, all right. Well, what does everyone else think?
Alex, the one thing is, is that the the children that are in here are from six months to five years. So yes, they definitely need to have that kind of supervision. They're not older kids that are, you know, you're going to be worrying about escaping and that type of stuff, so.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add, I didn't mention, but I'll just remind the Commission, and this comes up every time we look at childcare facilities, a bulk of the regulations are housed with the state, including the adequacy of the outdoor area. And so we don't really know, for example, how many children there will be, if this outdoor area will be adequate, given the number of kids, or even if the configuration will be adequate. We know in general what they're seeking to do and the state will then have to determine the adequacy based on their regulations. So, but I think they're good questions, but in terms of looking at the findings of fact and looking at the impact on the on the neighboring residents, things like that is is important.
With that information, Commissioner Doris, are you still, are we still going to require additional expense, maybe to add a door in that end of the building or?
I think, given the fact that someone's still going to come in and take a look and see if it's adequate, I mean, who has more experience with specifics, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, for the record, my concern isn't fire regress or escaping kids. It's just, and especially given that there has to be someone in that portion of the playground the whole time. That's my concern. It's just, it seemed a little removed from the, from the bulk of the operation. That was it. I think it's a great, we, I literally parked right next to that grass today. I think it's a great playground area. That was, so that was my only concern.
Right.
So no, for the record, no, I am no longer after that.
Thank you. I just didn't want to add any additional expense if we didn't have.
Thank you. I'll mark that off my list.
Other questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment on this item? Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this?
I'd like to.
Certainly. Yes, please. Come up and state your name and...
Good evening.
The one, would you hit, just turn one of them off, hit the button on either one. There you go. Thank you. That'll give you a little better volume.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Ally Gamble Cooper. I'm the director at Small Blessings Preschool and I'm here for another special use permit application. But I just have to say the dire need in Nevada for quality childcare. So I think anything that we can do, allowing the state to do their childcare licensing recommendations, I think it's great. And I think as a community, we really need to focus on quality childcare in Nevada because there's not enough. And there's not enough in Carson City. So, that's all. So thanks.
Thank you for your input. Okay, bring it back for a motion or a further discussion. Commissioner Doris?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve SUP nineteen dash zero four four, a request for a special use permit to allow for the establishment of a childcare center on property zone general commercial and located at 200 East Winnie Lane, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report.
We have a motion now. Gladly second this item. Commissioner S. Wine? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
I have to abstain. I abstained. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Moving on. Agenda item E nine and E ten, MPA dash one nine dash zero six five, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a request for an amendment to the master plan to redesignate from low-density residential to medium-density residential on six properties located at 96 Dean Court, 94 Dean Court, 93 Dean Court, 95 Dean Court, 97 Dean Court and 4376 North Gate Lane, APNs zero zero eight dash zero nine five dash oh two, dash oh three, dash oh four, dash one zero, dash one one and dash zero nine. Also, ZMA one nine dash zero six four, for possible action discussion regarding a request for amendment to the zoning map amendment to change the zoning from single-family one acre to single-family 12,000 on six properties located at, again, 96 Dean Court, 94 Dean Court, 93 Dean Court, 95 Dean Court, 97 Dean Court and 4376 North Gate Lane, APN zero zero eight dash zero nine five dash oh two, oh three, oh four, one zero, one one and oh nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll let you have a sip of water. Okay, the Planning Commission looked at this item at your meeting of November 28, 2018, as part of the annual master plan update and identified it for a master, a mapping correction. You may recall in advance of that, you had a variance request in front of you. And I believe it was Commissioner S. Wine who said, why is this before us for variance? Why aren't we looking at rezoning? And so we brought it as part of the annual master plan update and the Commission agreed this, this really should be redesignated on the master plan and rezoned. Then the board, your report went to the board for acceptance. These six lots on Dean Court were created in 1992. In advance of creating the lots, variances were issued for the lot sizes and setbacks. So you all know that that's not common, to say the least. The variance setbacks, if you will, are consistent with the setbacks for the single-family 12,000 zoning district. These lots range in size from 13,740 square feet to 19,259 square feet, not even a half acre. They're good-sized lots, don't get me wrong, but they're not one-acre lots. The master plan designation is for low-density residential and the zoning map designation is for single-family one acre. So to create compliance, the staff is recommending that the master plan be redesignated to medium-density residential and the zoning map be redesign, or rezoned to single-family 12,000. I'll just show you what that looks like on, on the screen. Right now, we have a low-density residential and you'll notice the properties to the west of the subject property, those are probably one-acre lots. They're much larger than these are. And the staff is proposing the master plan designation be medium-density residential, which is consistent with the designation of the properties just to the south of the subject properties. In terms of the zoning, right now, it's on single-family one acre, which the other properties along Arrowhead Drive and on the north side of Arrowhead Drive share that, that designation. And the staff is recommending the single-family 12,000, which would cause all of the lots to be in compliance, that we wouldn't have non-compliant lots. And their setbacks through the variance already are the same setbacks as the single-family 12 setbacks. So this is just a cleanup. In considering the master plan amendment, you consider the four findings of fact. In considering the zoning map amendment, you consider three findings of fact. In both cases, the staff was able to make all the findings in the affirmative. Just a reminder, only the Board of Supervisors can amend the master plan and only the Board of Supervisors can amend the zoning map. So the Planning Commission is making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So the Planning Commission is making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Um, in considering this item, you will need to take two separate actions, one on the master plan and one on the rezoning. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, and there is none applicant because this is a mapping correction based on the annual master plan report.
Hope, just for clarification, we're looking at medium density going to 12,000. Low density, does that start at one acre, or is it somewhere between 12,000 and one acre?
What the master, okay, so your master plan designation right now is low density residential. The master plan identifies what zoning districts are consistent with that designation. So for example, the single family two acre, the single family one acre, those would be consistent with low density residential. Then you have the master plan designation, medium density residential. So then we read our master plan to see what zoning districts would implement that designation. And the single family 12,000 zoning designation implements the medium density land use designation of the master plan.
That's what I was trying to clarify, it basically goes from 12,000 to one, almost to one acre. So that wouldn't be 18,000 lots or two, yeah, okay. Questions for staff?
I, I got a question.
Mr. Williams?
What happens to the variances that are out there then? Do they just get torn up, shredded? Do we have to revoke them?
No, what, the variances, they still exist, they probably just won't be necessary because the setbacks in, first, the lots are already created. So the variances were, as best I can tell, put in place to allow for the creation of lots of this size in this zoning district. So that already happened. Then in terms of the setbacks, the variances created the same setbacks as the single family 12,000. So now we don't have to keep revisiting, oh wow, back in what, 1992, they got a variance. Now it's, everything just kinda makes sense, and we can just follow the rules and it's SOP versus researching things, if that makes sense.
And for clarification, it doesn't affect any of the zoning of any of the lots around there, either side or whatever, this is just this one parcel?
It's six parcels.
Six parcels, yes. Public comment on this item? Yes, feel free, come forward and state your name.
Do I need to turn this on?
When you, it's hit the button, it turns green, you're good to go.
Okay. Uh, my name is Kathy Bax, I own the property at 4376 North Gate Lane.
Okay.
Just right on the corner there. Uh, this is my neighbor on Dean Court. Um, I have several questions, do I ask them one at a time?
If you would just state your questions, and then after the public comment, either staff or we will address those questions for you.
Okay, originally, that was a two and a half acre parcel, I believe, that was subdivided in 1992. And my first question, you stated the variance was made, but why was that not zoned differently at that time with the contractors who developed it? So that is one question. I, in, in listening to what you just said for medium density, uh, lots, I would argue that the track homes on, south of me on North Gate, uh, that is a little more congested than where we live. And if you go around the corner on Galena, I would almost bet that's high density because they, those homes are kinda wedged in there. So I don't feel it would be fair to our homes that are basically around a third of an acre to sort of be in that same group for, um, assessed valuation purposes. And my next question is, what does this zoning change do to ours, do or create for our assessed valuation and our property taxes, if any of that changes? I realize this is a cleanup on your map, but we all have our suspicions of what's going on with, um, some of the property across the road from me, uh, the Fisher's Own, Cottonwood Mobile Home and a great amount of pasture, which she had rezoned to medium density a few years ago, I was here for that meeting. So I don't know if, is there something else brewing in our neighborhood that we need to know about? So those are all my questions.
Sir?
Hi, uh, my name's Dick Henderson, I'm from 94 Dean Court. And I guess, one question for Hope was, what did you say was the, uh, the area for, uh, medium density, how many square feet? Oh, okay, uh. I, I know what brought this whole thing about was our neighbor on the corner wanted to build a workshop, because I talked to him, he told me, he said, in order for him to get his workshop put in, we were designated as high density, he needed a 30-foot easement from the fence to his shop. But, his question was, while I'm not high density, my lot's smaller, I only need 20 feet. And that way, he was granted a permit to build a shop. And I have nothing against him for building his shop or anything else, but I'm just wondering if he might be low density, but I'm not sure the rest of us are low density due to the square footages that we have, and why would I want to go from a high density to a low density lot if I don't have to?
You're going low to medium.
Or from low to medium. And that, that's my question, I, and what does it do to our house values, like Kathy says, or what it do to our taxes, or what else could go on based on what this rezoning does to our neighborhood? That's our main concern.
We'll open it up for any others to comment, and then we'll answer those questions.
Okay, so why not zone differently? Or why was it not originally zoned differently? I don't know, that's my answer. Um, I was actually really surprised to see the variances in advance of the subdivision, because as this commission knows, because they, they, every month, they sit down and we talk about land use, um, variances, it's a pretty high bar to get a variance. And to get variance on vacant land to subdivide is, is highly unusual, so I don't know what was at play.
Yeah, Lead Plumb Community Development Director, that pretty much wouldn't occur that way today, that you would get a variance for such a reduction in lot size based on the current zoning.
Well, I know there was a lot of contention about that from the neighbor just
Gotcha.
west of there, um, when these homes were built.
So why was it not originally just zoned for single family 12,000 as opposed to these variances and then the subdivision? My answer is, I don't know. Um, you're not like North Gate, to the south of you, you're right, they are, they are much smaller lots than your lots, and their zoning is single family 6,000. I'm recommending single family 12,000 for you, that's double the size of their lots, because the 12,000's a better fit for yours. What the, that 6,000's not the right fit. That's what's south of you. Um, in terms of assessed value and property tax, I'm grateful, I got this question with the retail court, rezoning, so I talked to the tax assessor about that. And the tax assessor explained to me that the assessment is based on the improvements once the property is improved. Now, if you had vacant land, it's a good question. You guys don't have vacant land, every single lot has improvements on it. And when I say that, it means you have a house, you have a driveway, you might have fences, you might have outbuildings. That's what the assessors basing your property taxes on, not on the zoning. Um, had you had vacant land, I'd have to punt on this and make the assessor explain their formula, but you don't have vacant land. Is something else brewing? Dick Henderson, is that your name?
Yeah.
Explained it. Your neighbor came in and wanted a shop, and wanted a variance, and this commission said, wait, this is all kinds of wrong, why is this zone single family one acre? That's what brought it onto the radar, nothing else. And actually, before this meeting, I jokingly said to some of the commissioners, I'm calling this the Paul Eswine Master Plan Amendment, because he's the one, Commissioner Eswine, who, who said this is all kinds of wrong, this needs to get rezoned. So that's what happened. And in terms of house values, um, your house is worth what your house is worth. This, your lot is what it is. This isn't, nobody can subdivide based on this, the lots are all improved, it's just creating compliance. And what's the difference between medium density and low density? It's acreage. You've got, what, 13,000 to 19,000 square foot lots, an acre is 43560, you're not even at half, half an acre. Which, you have good sized lots, don't get me wrong, but you don't have one acre lots.
Right.
And so, although you're surround, you have, three sides has low density because they have really big lots.
Right, right.
And they're probably, a lot of these are on septic, right? And, yeah, so anyhow, so that's, I could look up the numbers for you, I don't want to go off the top of my head, but, but that's the net of it.
Uh, one.
And that was my question to Hope when I asked, low density being one acre, the next, it's 12,000 or one acre.
So that's the breaking point, is 12,000 and then one acre?
Point. No, there's, no, there's, no, there's a, there's a 21. But I think back, back to original, so I think you've asked, you know, what are the negatives? What are the potential negatives that you should be, those are the concerns related to your questions, but going back to original of, of the positives, and I guess it's, it's really how you want to look at your neighborhood and your neighbors, the positive is, you don't have to get variances, you're able to do things on your lot that you should be able to do and build on a 12,000 square foot lot or so that you have, versus having these ridiculous one acre setbacks. Now, I can't, that doesn't mean you should like it, maybe you like that, nobody can build anything without getting a variance, but the proposal is to make you consistent with other lots similarly situated in Carson City.
One more question, um. So the size of the lot, as you noted in the letter, we, it's just not, is, the minimum is 12,000, and then we go up from there within the constraints of median density.
Right.
To 13,000, all the numbers that are.
Right, so the single family 12,000 means your minimum lot size is 12,000. No, none of these lots are 24,000, so no one can subdivide.
We're between 12 and 24, okay. And then just as a final comment, if you would like to know, our neighbors with this workshop did an absolutely beautiful job, it looks like it belonged to the house from the get-go.
That was a good job.
And we're all happy people there.
Yeah.
And want to stay that way.
And I'm sorry they threw you under the bus if they did.
We've taken care of those, your questions for you? That takes, we've taken care of your questions for you?
Yes, you have, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for bringing them forward. Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, we can bring it back for the discussion that's addressed on our motion.
Since this is my, my amendment.
That's why I commented.
I move to adopt resolution number 2019-PC-R-3 recommending to the Board of Supervisors approval of MPA-19-065, a master plan amendment to change the land use designation from low density residential to medium density residential for six properties located at 96 Dean Court, 94 Dean Court, 93 Dean Court, 95 Dean Court, 97 Dean Court, and 4376 North Gate Lane, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
I'll second that, Commissioner Sattler will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Continue, sir.
Sure. I move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of ZMA-19-064, a zoning map amendment to change the zoning from single family one acre to single family 12,000 on six properties located at 96 Dean Court, 94 Dean Court, 93 Dean Court, 95 Dean Court, 97 Dean Court, and 4376 North Gate Lane, based on the findings contained in the staff report.
Commissioner Sattler will second it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a suggestion.
Address one.
The next time we have a litany of addresses, maybe we could put them in order.
Moving on, agenda item E11. SUP-16-048-1 for possible action discussion and possible action regarding the request to modify existing special use permit, SUP-16-048, to increase the number of containers on site of two, from two to three, including relocation of an existing metal storage container and placement of an additional metal storage container which has been on the site since 2011 at 4151 East Fifth Street, APN 010-035-27. A little confusing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, in 2011, there was a special use permit for two metal storage containers. The idea at that time was they needed a place to store track equipment. And these storage containers were by a track on the property. Also in 2011, a third storage container was brought on the site and put on what I'm gonna call the circle. So if you had a chance to pull into the school and see the containers, you'll see there, there's this circle before you get to the parking lot, when you go right to the front of the school. And that was there as part of construction. Well, whereas that should have been removed when construction was over, it did not get removed. And one of the two storage containers that were allowed to be down at the track was moved to the circle. So instead of just two lawful containers down by the track, we ended up with, as I understand it, one lawful container by the track, and two containers that didn't receive permission, um, what I'm calling the circle by the front of the building. So we have a total of three containers. You do have a letter in your packet from a neighbor, and yes, this was brought to our attention via complaint, we didn't catch it. And we advised the school that they need to either remove the containers or obtain a special use permit. So they, they are seeking a special use permit. The zoning is public, and all the uses in the public zoning district require special use permits. Additionally, Municipal Code 1816 states that metal storage containers intended for a permanent basis require a special use permit. Again, when you're considering a special use permit, you need to require, reconsider the seven required findings of fact. In this case, I want to focus on finding number two. Finding number two discusses whether or not the use will be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties or the general neighborhood. If you were able to go to the site, you saw a solid wooden fence that is essentially the boundary to the backyard of the houses over on Buzzy Ranch. And I have a site plan that I just put up that shows the houses on Buzzy's Ranch Road, so you can see how they back up to the school. The container location is up on the screen now. We do, when we consider impact on neighbors, a lot of times fencing's a mitigation, but we already have a fence there. We also have these containers 60 feet from the property line. The containers are passive, they're used for storage, they're located among some trees, and they're painted a neutral color. So given this location, that they're surrounded by driving aisles for vehicles, staff does not find that they will be detrimental to the use, peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development of surrounding properties. We understand there was a complaint, but staff is able to make finding number two. And staff is, and that's the finding I want to focus on, we were able to make all seven findings, it's not creating traffic, it doesn't need public facilities and water and sewer, things like that. Um, but the one I really want to focus on, because I think it's, it needs focus, given that it was, it was a complaint from a neighbor who sits on his porch and can see these, that I felt like we really needed to talk about finding number two. Mark Johnson from the school district is present, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none with the applicant, Mike, would you like to come forward, sir, please? Seeing none with the applicant, might, should I come forward, sir, please? State your name for the record.
Mark Johnson, Carson City Schools. The only thing I'd like to clarify, the two containers that were put in were by SUP sixteen. They were just a few years ago, they weren't back in two thousand and eleven. The one you shown on there, number two, that was put in in two thousand and eleven. The contractor put it in there, and for some reason, it was capped. My guess is we bought it from them. We kept it there, we used it for storage. When schools are designed, our architects don't have adequate storage, they still don't in all of our schools. So we kept it there, and this was brought to our attention. We couldn't find it history-wise, how it got there, but our maintenance guy said it's been there since we expanded Eagle Valley. The two storages were put on SUP sixteen dash oh four eight up at the track. I'm available for questions.
Yes, first of all, the, the eight conditions of approval, you're fine with all those that the staff has?
Yes. And we're more than happy to meet those for the school district.
My question, what are, how often are these used? I mean, you in and out of them daily, weekly?
Yes. The one, the first metal one, if you look at number one there, it's ninety-five percent full, and it's full of office equipment and furniture, student desks, chairs, portable stage for performances, barbecue, and a floor buffer. The other one, if you look at, the other one, it's two-thirds full from what I put here, with smart boards, student desks, chairs, melt crates, and then we put our Chromebooks, which are computers for the summer. And I drove, they had it open this last week, and it's more than two-thirds full. I was wrong in my assessment.
I was just asking that, wondering if there was a place on the property they could go, but if you're into them that often?
The answer's yes.
It would be more hidden or whatever, out of the way?
There. Answer's yes, there. We had them up at the track, and the purpose of the two up at the track were for PE equipment and track, but the, our needs for track equipment lessened, so we, we moved it down and we're requesting to have that relocation permanent at that spot. And the one that we relocated was the number one, which is right behind it.
Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Doris?
What would be the problem with, pardon me, with moving all of them to where, you know, all three where the two originally were and where they were?
Up at the track? It'd be a real inconvenience if you've been to Eagle Valley.
I have.
It, it's horrible for maintenance moving furniture. It's not track equipment. I mean, moving, it's a real inconvenience for moving maintenance equipment, uh, smart boards. I mean, that's used for the school function and operation, the stuff that's in there right now.
Because I, when I drove over there, I just came in my-
It's for the use of the school and operation of the school, not for, the one we put it up there, for the original SUP, it was for PE equipment and for track.
Understood. I just, I guess the, what brought it to my attention, and it seems like a reasonable concern, was the letter from Citizen, Mr. Rabold. He, you know, he says, well, why don't we just have them back where they originally were? And, and, I mean, I understand it's a little more inconvenient, but the entire property is not that large. And so it, it did kind of go into my mind, well, why, yeah, why, you know, student desks, obviously you're not taking those out every day or even once a week. Smart boards probably not even quite often. So yeah, why isn't it a little more removed, considering even just one resident is bothered by it? And they weren't lawfully put there. That's why I went down that road.
Thank you.
I drove by, my kids went, I came in the entryway into the loop and where we used to go right in front of the school. That's now basketball courts and stuff, you know, up above.
Yes.
Where, the, I couldn't see, I didn't see these.
You have, you have to go all the way back around?
Behind the building?
Behind it, yep.
Okay, that's why, I, I, okay.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Public comment on this item?
Please feel, come forward and state your name for us, if you would, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Barney Raybold. I live at seven seven eight Buzzy's Ranch Road, immediately to the east of the backside of the, the school. I'm the one who raised the question. I moved into this house about the time the construction was underway. The one container was there. I didn't think anything about it because it was there when I moved in. I did complain to the school that it was loaded with graffiti, and to their credit, they took care of that and was very happy with that. When I noticed the second container coming in, I raised the question about what's going on. It is visible to me and at least two of my neighbors to the south from the back of our property. And I would like to correct one item that was said. The fence along that line is a chain link fence, I believe, on the side of the school. The wooden fence is on my side of the property, so the fence that's provided is simply chain link. And from my house, both of those are visible. Both of those are frankly eyesores to me because they are metal storage buildings, and I find it a shame that the school wasn't able to arrange for adequate storage for their materials when they built the school or when they advanced it. But I'm not here to discuss that. I would like to, again, request that they consider putting them back where they were around the track. If you go to the backside where the track is, nobody can see those unless you park your car, come up to the fence, stand up tall and look over and see it. The same with the solar fields back there. They did, they had a good solution to putting the solar panels out of the visible area of homeowners and the public, and the two that were there were not known to anyone. So I'm here to request that they go back there and get out of the view that I and my neighbors have.
For a discussion or comment, I, I have difficulty just with the fact that the one was left there, you know, when they reconstructed, whatever, and it's been there for eight years and no one knew it didn't have a permit or whatever, and the other two, and they're moving around. Obviously, the school may not have known, they should have come to planning, except they had a use permit on the two down on the track. So I'm having a little difficulty with the fact that there is a neighbor that has difficulty with it and either back possibly where they were or possibly finding another spot down in that area that's more adequate for the school, but still where they're out of view of any of the neighbors. That's just a comment of mine, so.
Is there a possibility of screening? Because aren't the Buzzy Ranch houses down a little bit and the schools up a little bit higher? Is there a possibility to actually screen on the side that they actually see the visibility of the containers?
Who are you asking?
I don't know. I don't know.
Having been in the field, you're correct, Buzzy's Ranch Road is, is lower. However, I did observe from the school property that some of the homes on Buzzy's Ranch Road have elevated decks, almost, almost a second floor deck, if you will. I'm not sure it was second floor that high, but quite elevated. And so the views are, are pretty great. So I'm sure they're, they're going for that, that view in that, in the, let me see, sort of a southerly, southwesterly direction. It is on an island. The island does have some trees. I did look to see if I saw irrigation. I did not see irrigation, so I don't know if those are established trees that aren't irrigated or if I just missed the irrigation. I did look for it. But it, I, having seen the circle, the circle is sized where you could shift, I believe, the containers and put, have some type of additional trees or something on the Buzzy Ranch side, if you will, of the circle.
I would, I don't know if we can add that into it or somehow to get like either trees or some kind of screening initially until the trees would be adequate or whatever. I don't know if that's something we can add to this or not.
Remember, about, about a year ago, we had a discussion with an owner who had some storage containers on his lot, and he put a small roof on top of them and cement boards on the side and made them look like buildings. If the school had built a storage room there, we wouldn't be having this discussion, but we've got temporary containers. If we put the temporary containers together and made them look like a building, it would seem to me it would solve all the problems. Because then, then you've got a building to look at, not a, not a storage container. And I don't think it's, it would be exorbitant for the school to be able to do that or something like that. I don't know how we make them do that, but that, that's the con-
They could even, I mean, if you do something like that, you could even add more space to the entire storage thing. But I, I just want to say, I, I fully agree, these are temporary things on a, an island that, without them there is a, a fine looking thing. I've seen them. My daughter went to Eagle Valley. But with them there, it does look like there's temporary structure stuck where they definitely weren't designed to be, and it's out of place. I like, I, I think the temporary roof and concrete board is a good idea.
Well, it, it goes back to where we started, that there were two of them down by the track, and that's what was approved in a, in a special use permit, and that's been modified and added to. So in essence, we only have one, that's where it belongs. And the gentleman that had done the one out you're referring to, it wasn't extensive, but it looked really nice. It was kind of a slope roof kind of thing, and you didn't see metal. You just saw board, whatever. And either screening, doing something like that, or putting them back where they were and is kind of where I was, would be leaning, is my-
So, bottom line is, it's ease of access where they're located. That's the main reason you have the containers where they are, is just for ease of access.
It's to store the materials in the school, to not take up classroom space, to store it in buildings, is all of our space. We're at about ninety-eight percent capacity in all of our schools.
Right. So, because it's ease of access, if they were moved back to their location, which is out of sight of whatever, I would think it would be less expensive, and I'm pretty sure Carson City School District does have vehicles of some kind if you needed to access equipment, which it doesn't sound like it's equipment you need every day, even if it's twice a week.
Some can be. They, they were open-
I understand.
It was open this week, so I can't say that it is or isn't.
Well, I just think that if the, if the reason for this is ease of access, then you can use a truck, a van, a golf cart, whatever. Put them back where they were, out of sight of everybody, and for the ease of access to whatever is in those sheds, as long as you've got some sort of motorized vehicle, because you're going to have to pull them out of the shed anyway. Whatever you're getting in, whatever you're getting out of the shed, you're going to have to pull out. And I'm sure that based on the location they're at anyway, you have to move them from that location to wherever you're putting, whatever equipment you're pulling out of the shed has to be moved somehow or another to the location you're taking it to. So however that's done, if it's on a cart, if it's on a whatever, that if those containers are put back in their original location, you're still going to be utilizing some sort of moving equipment to get whatever it is out of the shed, out of the shed. So I think it would be less costly to move those back where they were, utilizing whatever moving equipment you need periodically, golf cart, truck, whatever, than trying to put any kind of border, roof, wall, screening, trees, whatever have you, just to solve this problem. I, I mean, the special use permit is what we're going to have to discuss anyway. But location is part of the, of the whole underlying issue of this item. We've got an individual who obviously doesn't like looking at those two storage sheds, can't say as I blame him. I wouldn't either.
He said he didn't like looking at one of them, the new one. He was okay with, he was okay with one of them.
Potato, potato. So anyway, that's my thought. It's regardless of what you do, you're going to be moving stuff from two, from two.
Commissioner Tinkell.
Intent, if we go down that road, either, because there's only two sheds to begin with, the one that's there shouldn't have been there. So that would either be moved with the other two and approved as three, or they go back to stay under this use permit, they would just have the two by the track and that third one would go away. But his new request is for three, two there and one on the track.
Okay. And I have, sorry. I have none. The problem I have is the two that are located where they're located, they need to all be co-located, one spot. They're ease of access then, you don't, you're not running all over the place. Everything's co-located centrally, one place.
And even if it's somewhere in that area, not necessarily where it exactly is, but where the neighbors can't see it or from any, any angle, even if it's closer to the building, I don't know if that area would exist or not. That's what I was leading to, is there another spot on another part of the building fairly close that you don't have neighbors looking into the area besides the track?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I don't see it as our job to re-engineer-
I agree.
-and to determine where this goes. It just looks like it's not ready for us. I would, I would much rather have the school district and, and the planning department sit down and figure out some alternatives-
And then bring it back, continue it.
And bring it back so that we don't have to, you know, obviously they need the storage.
I have it.
All right? And, and I don't think anybody disputes that. Obviously, they're an eyesore, and I don't think anybody disputes that. There's got to be a solution, and I don't think we're going to figure it out up here, but I think it can be figured out to everybody's satisfaction at a later date. And I would, I'd prefer us not, personally, not to vote on it tonight and, and cause a lot of consternation as, as opposed to, let's just see if we can figure it out.
I was working up towards that.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I took your thunder.
No, no, but no, but the suggestion of maybe continuing it, recommending staff and school get together and see if they can come up with some other, I couldn't even, some other alternatives or location possibilities, whatever, that would not be offensive to the neighbors, but also would accomplish what they need to get done.
Yeah, with, with that being, the ultimate goal is out of sight of all the neighbors, no matter what the options are.
Sir?
And you, you can set the date, that'd be fine also.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, then we continue this item to a date uncertain.
Will you ask the applicant on the record to, if he agrees to a continuation?
Yeah, and do you, would you agree to a continuation also? Then I would make that motion and hope that the staff and the school district can get together and come up with a better solution for us.
And bring it back as soon as it's convenient for both the staff and the school district. Can be next month or whatever.
Yeah, I'd like to put a timeline on it.
I think if we shoot for the July meeting, if we come in at June, we're good. I don't think you have to give me a timeframe. We want to resolve this. You have my commitment, we want to resolve it. And if we have to agree to disagree, well, we'll come back with, but I understand the, the objective of the planning commission is, is they can be there, but we don't want to see them.
And you either come back with changes or bring it back as it is for a vote at a later meeting.
Point of order, my motion is still on the floor.
I move to second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, let's, we're going to take about a five minute break if we can.
Special use permit U 91-92-2. At that time, a daycare facility was a conditional use in the RO zoning district. Regulations were subsequently amended to limit childcare facilities in the residential office zoning district to assess only accessory to residential uses. So you cannot have right now in the residential office zoning district, a childcare facility that's not accessory to a residence. Of note, the, well, I've already told you the church owns the entire block and I've explained the two parcels. So in considering this special use permit, you have to consider the seven findings of fact. I want to speak to finding number two, which is neighborhood compatibility. I want to focus on this because it's really important to understand that the outdoor play area and the drop off locations are not changing. That means with this expansion, the expansion can't stand on its own. It's relying on the existing facility that's there. So there's a condition of approval that indicates that this special use permit is only in effect as long as the existing childcare facility is in operations because that facility is providing the play equipment and the drop off locations. In terms of finding two with neighborhood compatibility, what that means is that the impacts that are realized right now will stay static. We'll have more children, but the outdoor play area stays the same, in the same place. The drop off stays in the same place. So staff was able to make all seven findings of fact in the affirmative. We are recommending approval. Rob Lauder is here representing the applicant and Ally, I can't remember your last name, Cooper, and Ally Cooper is present. I'm happy to go in more in depth than anything, but I'll turn it over to them. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Could you explain number three?
Commissioner Boerms.
Could you please explain condition number three?
Stephen Potash, development engineer for the record. So the curb ramp at that corner doesn't meet the current ADA standards. So there actually isn't a...
Which corner is it?
Northwest.
Okay.
So actually, there currently isn't a ramp there. So that's the concern there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Green, you're good to go, sir.
Okay, yes. My name's Rob Lauder. I, I wear a lot of hats in this. I'm the engineer representing the church and I'm also chairman of the Board of Trustees for the church.
First of all, the seven conditions of approval, you're fine with all those?
We're in agreement with those, yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Questions for the applicant? See, none? Oh, Commissioner Doris? No? No, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public comment on this item? Anyone in the audience wish to make comment on this? If not, we'll bring it back for a motion or discussion.
Before I make a motion...
Commissioner Westman.
I'd just like to say that this is another area where the, we might want to look at, revisit the zoning ordinance again because if you're going to allow a church in this district, then it doesn't make sense to me that you aren't going to allow an auxiliary used to that facility. So just...
You're like the residence requirement or that sort of thing possibly?
Yeah.
If it's, because there's been other churches brought to us where they've had daycare facilities in the church.
Yes.
So I guess that goes with the special use permit.
Right. I mean, I'm not objecting to the special use permit, but I think that the language of the ordinance might need to be revisited.
Good point. Thank you, sir.
So with that said, I move to approve SUP-19-053, a request for a special use permit to allow for the expansion of a non-conforming use, a childcare facility, on property zone resident, residential office and located at 213 West North Minnesota Street, based on the ability to make the required findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Boerms, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? And Commissioner Tingle and Commissioner Preston did not vote abstained on that? Moving on. Next two items kind of go together, but we'll start with E 12. SUP-19-053 for possible action discussion and possible acts regarding a special use permit to allow the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just reading the one we just finished. Goodness, I thought I flipped it over. Okay, here we go. Oh, my goodness. Item E 13, MISC-19-047, for possible actions discussed and possible acts regarding determining of grounds for revocation and reexamination of special use permit U-79-25 exists and possible direction of staff to issue and serve the applicant with an order to show cause why the special use permit should not be revoked or reexamined relative to the special use permit U-79-25 located at 7400 Brunswick Canyon Road, APN 008-531-44 and 008-531-45. Hope?
Thank you, Chairman. On December 27, 1979, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit to operate a concrete batch plant, a hot plant operation, and to remove earth products on property at 7400 Brunswick Canyon Road. The special use permit included a condition that states in part, public recreation access through the subject property, undefined roadways must not be restricted. Allegations were made that the public recreation access was restricted. Therefore, at its meeting of April 24, 2019, the Planning Commission requested that the director conduct an investigation. I have interviewed the following people as part of the investigation. Jennifer Budge, the Parks and Recreation Open Space Director, Vern Cron, the Senior Park Planner, Ann Bolinger, the Open Space Administrator, Jeremy Page, the managing partner of General Thomas Hill LLC, which is the property owner and the business owner, and John Costello, a park ranger. Based on this, these interviews and reading some emails, I have found that the gate was erected by the former property owner slash business owner in 2013. However, it remained in an open position. In 2015, the Parks and Rec Department started obtaining bids to automate the gate with the goal of closing it, closing access at Sunset. This was being done with the agreement of the former business owner. In 2016, the Parks and Rec Department executed contracts to automate the gate and place signage on the gate. Later in 2016, based on not owning the gate, the Parks and Rec Department directed the fence contact tractor, Artistic Fence, to not automate the gate. Therefore, although the equipment was put in, it was never, it was never, what's the word? Actuate is the word that Vern Cron kept using. In January 2017, the Assistant Parks and Rec Director directed the staff to secure the gate with a padlock due to unsafe conditions associated with flooding. In May 2017, one of the business owners, Zach Joan, who's, who's actually here today, visited the Parks and Rec office to discuss the company's frustration with the gate. And I put, discuss the company's frustration with the gate in quotation marks because this was from an email written from a staff member in the Parks and Rec Department to the Parks and Rec Director. In that same email, it noted that Mr., that the staff person advised Mr. Joan that we want, quote, that we want to see it closed also, that there's some legal issues holding the process up. So I want to stop there for a minute because we had a gate go in in 2013 and it wasn't shut. In 2015, there were discussions with the then-business owner in Parks and Rec about its desirability to shut the gate at night. And in fact, contracts were let by the Parks and Rec Department to actually have equipment installed to automate this gate so that it could close at night. So going on, in May 17, 2018, at the end of unsuccessful negotiations between the Parks Rec and Open Space Department relative to a joint gate agreement, managing partner Jeremy Page, who is also present, advised the Parks and Rec Director that it would be best to keep the gate closed for liability reasons. So the Parks and Rec Department with, I believe, the DA's office was in conversations with the business owner slash property owner regarding having a gate agreement so that the gate could, the gate which is privately owned, but the road accesses both the open space as well as the business, the, the pit, if you will, trying to make arrangements to coordinate on when that gate would be open, when that gate would be shut. So that was in 2018. Jennifer Budge, the Parks and Rec Director is present and she was, she was active in those, those negotiations, if you will. And if you have questions on that, she could answer those. In April 12, 2019, and I'm sorry, in an April 12, 2019 conversation with the Parks and Rec Director, Steve Brown, I'm sorry, it was an email. Steve Brown, an employee of Brunswick Materials, seemed to attribute the gate closure to problems with the gate. What happened in that email is, I'm sorry, it was a conversation. Parks and Rec Director Jennifer Budge called Steve Brown on April 12, 2019, and she advised him that the gate had been closed, you know, the previous couple of weekends. And he, and he seemed to attribute it to problems with the gate. The Parks and Rec Director documented the conversation immediately after having the conversation. So my information on that is from that email. In a May 8, 2019 conversation that I had with Jeremy Page, Mr. Page advised that the gate was closed to protect the road during a rainy time. We had had heavy rains. Steve Brown, who's the employee for Brunswick Materials, had scraped the road and put in a V ditch to protect the road. And because it was really muddy, he had programmed the gate to shut so that it wouldn't, it wouldn't get harmed, if you will, because it was so muddy. And he forgot to reprogram the gate, so it stayed closed for, for three weeks. In that same conversation, Mr. Page advised me that if the gate is not secured, there are thefts, and advised of a situation where a car had driven off the road. Believe it was a Jeep drove off the road. Based on that conversation, I consulted with the sheriff's office and they advised that in April and May, in addition to calls they received from the Rangers, there were four calls that appear in the dispatch history. One was for illegal shooting. There were two suspicious vehicles and one abandoned vehicle. On April 15, the code enforcement staff hand-delivered a cease and desist letter to Steve Brown, advising him that Brunswick Materials was not to restrict public access. On April 18, I met with one of the owners of Brunswick Materials, Zach Joan, and advised him that the Brunswick Materials could not restrict public access. That meeting was at approximately 3:30. At 6:30 the next evening, the gate was closed, restricting public access. That was the last time the gate's been closed. Based on a log maintained by the park rangers, access has not been restricted since April 19. You have included with your late material, an updated log from the Rangers, and you'll see that in the, in their logging in, the information, the gate has not been shut. I'm not prepared to recommend scheduling a show cause hearing. Having said that, there is one key staff member in Parks and Rec who has not been available, who I would like to speak to. I would also like to get any questions from the Planning Commission so that as I pursue this investigation, I can make sure to answer questions you have. I know Commissioner Preston, you specifically requested information about the road and you had compared it to the Ash Canyon Road. I had had that conversation with Jen Budge when I met with her. I'm going to ask that she speak to that item because she understands the terminology better than I do. And my recommendation to the Commission is that you ask any questions you want answers to, but I am not recommending that you take an action this evening. Thank you.
So in your recommendation, rather, staff would like to keep the investigation open, identify additional information the Commissioners might like, and report any further findings to the Planning Commission at the June meeting, correct? That's kind of what?
Correct.
Wanted to clarify that. Questions for staff? Anything, you know, if they wanted something added or what?
Oh, if we want to add something to that? I think, I think that, I would like to know about the road, but the other thing is, is that, my question is, is what was the legal reason that the Parks and Recreation sent out to bid for an automatic gate closure, but elected not, had it installed, but not to use it, yet gave the authorization to use it to a private individual, which would be, actually, something was bought by the city?
What happened was in 2015, Parks and Rec, with the cooperation of the then-business owner, had a cooperative partner. It was the business owner's gate. And so they started obtaining bids to automate that gate. They, and as well sign it, so there were two different contracts let. The improvements were made. And when they were going through the orientation in terms showing the Rangers and so on, how to use the gate and what the codes would be and so on, that's when there was actually a conversation with risk management. And risk management said, who owns this gate? And at that point, it was clear that it was not a publicly owned gate and the city essentially stopped. And they said, we're, we're not going to pursue this. My understanding, Parks and Rec staff was able to get in touch with Artistic Fence to determine who asked him to activate the gate. And he advised that Steve Brown had asked him to activate the gate and he'd been, anything he had done since 2000, I think it was 16, September 2016, had been done at Steve Brown's request.
So there's a little confused. Prior to that, there was, a lot of this was with a different owner, correct?
Right. It was the former owner who the city was working with cooperatively.
And who is now sold to the gentleman, it's Mr. Brown?
That's my understanding.
Got you.
I have two questions. Was there, the first one, was there ever any instances of the gate being closed or problems to speak of with the previous property owner?
It's interesting. The person I, who had a lot of documentation from Parks and Rec regarding good bids for the gate and was actually the person who had to padlock the gate during the flooding event, said the only time he had had conversations with that business owner was the time he padlocked the gate because he had accidentally padlocked that owner in. So that was his only conversation. Now, Jen Budge wasn't with the city at that time. It was the former Parks and Rec Director and, and so that's, I don't know what his conversations were with that business owner.
But to be clear, we didn't have any sort of complaints to speak of about the gates being closed and restricting public access prior to the current property owner purchasing the property?
That's my understanding. In interviewing with the ranger, in particular, the ranger indicated until recently, the gate was always there, but was never closed.
Perfect, all right. And then my second question was, who maintains the road? Who's responsible for maintaining the road, the trail or the road, or however you want to classify it, from the gate into the deep, deeper in there? The city or the private, the property owner?
My understanding is prior to this property owner, the road was not being maintained. Jen Budge may have more information, but based on my interviews, I understand with the change of ownership of the pit, the road condition improved tremendously and the property owner has been maintaining the road.
I think if, well, we, we can bring Parks and Rec forward and then we can coordinate back and between staff and them, I think. Okay, question for Dr. Drew.
Okay, my other question has to do with Public Works because that, there's a valve there that actually is for the affluent, for the affluent lake that goes underneath there that's accessed on the other side of the gate. So my question is, is at any time, was the city actually maintaining any of that road because it actually has all that purple pipe all the way through it?
Dan Stuckey, City Engineer for the record. I do not know what the history on the maintenance of the road. I've been trying to contact some people right now to figure that out, so I don't have the history. I know we have gone back there in the past and, and obviously, like you said, the reclaimed line, done some maintenance on it. But as far as the road maintenance, I'm not sure what the history is with that.
Orders? As, as I understand, Hope, what you said is that the city owns the gate mechanism? The gate closing mechanism?
The city paid to have the gate mechanism installed. It's installed on a private gate on private property.
They don't own the gate, they just bought the mechanism.
Yeah, I'm saying, so the city owns the mechanism?
No.
No?
It's on private property.
I, I can't, I can't speak to that. I can only say that the city did pay to have it installed and it's on private property and associated with a private gate. I can put this on my list.
No, I'm, so the, so the city paid to install it, they didn't pay to purchase it? Or you don't know?
They paid to purchase it, I saw the contract.
Okay, all right. If the city owned the gate...
The city does not own the gate.
If the city, if the city owned the gate, does that solve any problems?
The gate is still located on private property, so we'd have to...
Okay.
Access our improvement on private property.
Okay.
Let's bring Parks and Rec forward if we could. Jennifer, would you join us, please? And hopefully between staff and Public Works and the others. Obviously, it looks like we need to continue this to get some, quite a few more answers, but we can get some clarity here, hopefully. For your record, just...
Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you. Questions for...
I would just like to have my question answered about the road. Is it considered one of the accessory roads designated in the state of Nevada?
It is not considered a public road, an RS 2477 public road per the state. There are several roads in the area that are designated as such, but it's not.
Commissioner Doris?
I, I mean, if you know the answer to the question I, I posed earlier, which was who, it sounds like the, the current owners have really maintained the road since they bought it, but is, does the city do any maintenance on that road?
The only maintenance that I'm aware of is actually past the pit. We've done a lot of road maintenance past that location, especially since the floods. We have received FEMA dollars, but it's past the private owner's location. So I'm not aware of any, at least as far as Parks and Recreation goes, participating in road maintenance prior to the gate or to the pit operation.
Commissioner, question?
Does, here's another question. I don't think you're going to be able to answer this one. Was, was it, when, when the city purchased that property through the Q 18 money? There was an easement that was left in there for the VNT Railroad. Does the VNT Railroad own the road? So that would be the next question.
I think that could be some due diligence that we can continue to look into. We do have title reports and we have all the purchase documents from those parcels and we can piece that together because there's so many different parcels that go in there in that corridor. I know on all the accessory maps, the VNT right of way is identified, but as far as ownership, I think we'd have to get some additional clarification.
And I think with the suggestion, recommendation to continue or whatever, I, I think it's important too to know what the Parks and Rec city and what, what they want. I mean, it looks like you want it, wanted it closed at one time at sundown or around that time, or are they still coming down? I mean, that's questions we may need answered or clarified on.
We worked with the property owner to develop the gate agreement that Hope referred to. It was actually scheduled for a board of supervisors meeting. We thought we had concurrence on both sides and it was pulled from the meeting at the last minute. So it's our intent to work, you know, with the owner and for the benefit of everyone to be consistent with our park system and, and have the gate closed in the, in the evening hours. And we'd like to cooperate with that. Obviously, if they're there after dark, things can happen and could create safety issues and we want the community to be safe and recreating, especially in a safe manner.
Do you know if that item was pulled by staff or by the owner?
It was pulled by the owner.
Okay, thank, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Given that it sounds like the Parks Department wouldn't be, wouldn't object to the gate being closed and working with the, with the property owner, would the Parks Department have any objection if the gate was not there at all?
I think we would have concerns. I think it would really benefit the community as well as the property owner to have some limited access after dark. And that would be consistent with that as long as we'd have access available, especially for emergencies. We have to be able to make some decisions and get emergency personnel in there easily. So I, I think a cooperative effort would be in everybody's best interest.
I, I've been here since 1971 and I know that was a very popular party area for many, many, many years and probably still is. They used to run a raft race right from that bridge all the way to Dayton that I floated in a couple of times as a younger person, but, so I, I think, like you say, the control was needed if, if possible. Anyway, Commissioner Tingle?
Would it make sense to move the gate past the pit?
I think that could be consideration. I, I think the, the property owner would probably still have some concerns. But I think a different location could be a point of discussion.
Or if they even moved it closer to the pit to where people could go down but not through and, but it's still on his road, that's the problem.
Well, and to be clear, I mean, while we want to work with the property owners and whatnot, the gate was never, you know, they're not supposed to obstruct public access. So, I mean, if the gate is serving a, a safety purpose for the city, it's understood. But I mean, I think that should be our main concern with where, especially in regards to moving the gate or getting rid of it at all.
So I think if, if everyone's expressed any additional questions that, you know, Hope may have gathered any information on things we want clarified, we can go with the recommendation or make a motion.
Do you want to see if there's any public comment on this item? Okay.
If I could, Commissioner Preston, is that okay if I, just, I did speak with our operations manager. We have never maintained that road as far as the city, nor do we have any obligation that he was aware of to maintain that road. So just wanted to provide you that information.
Just for clarification, wasn't Hodges or one of those test places down that road as well at one time? Hodges Construction, they tested vehicles and that sort of thing? Or they were out in Dayton, further down? Okay, okay, okay. I had a buddy work there, I thought it was out that road. Okay. Thank you. Public comment on this? Anyone from the public wish to comment on the item? Would the applicant like to come forward and comment or add or discuss? It'll be fine.
I'm Jeremy Page. I'm the manager of the business out there. This one? Okay. All right. So we purchased the property in 2017. Just to be clear on that, because it sounded like there's some stuff going back to 16. We purchased it in 17 and I'm a huge proponent, proponent of public lands, public access. When they gated Ash Canyon, I was, I was upset about that. That's not our intention to restrict access back there. I want the public back there. I want them using it and I want responsible people using it. And that's been the issue since we purchased the property. We've had theft, vandalism. People have gone into our, our warehouse, broken and stolen tools, stolen equipment, stolen wire, live wire that we had to replace and get new permits. And, and there was, and I can't believe it wasn't on the dispatcher's report, there was a vehicle that drove into the river and the people actually got carefied it out of there. And so, you know, for us, it's just coming up to, coming to an agreement to keep it safe, keep, keep our guys, our property safe and keeping, you know, the public safe. And so we're willing to, we, we want to work with it. Yes, there, we made some mistakes. We closed the gate to protect the road. It got left that way for three weekends. That was, that was on accident. We weren't trying to, you know, keep it closed. And so we, we want to move, we want to work with the city and, and, and do what's right. And if the city decides that they don't want a gate there, then fine, we'll, we'll live with it and, well, you know, we'll, we'll try to secure the property the best we can, but we'd prefer to have dusk of dawn or whatever is the appropriate time. we can, but we'd prefer to have dusk to dawn or whatever is the appropriate time.
And driving out there, your, your property is all fenced, correct?
No.
Oh, up and behind it's not, probably?
No, it's just right there on the road.
On the road.
It's fenced, but it doesn't even go the whole road. Once you get around the big corner and you go down maybe 200 yards, the fence stops there. So people, we believe, we do have security cameras up now, but they can't cover the whole hundred acres, but we do have it up around our facilities and we believe they were coming in around from that backside up by the berms and that's where they were, they were driving in and stealing.
Thank you. It's for the applicant. Thank you.
Just one more item.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'll bring it back for discussion or I'll make a recommendation.
I would just like to add to the list of things we're looking into. I know I emailed you about it and you told me to bring it up at the meeting level, which I kind of already did, but I would like to look into, not saying that it'll be pursued, but options for either moving the gate or removing the gate and how we would go forward with either one of those directions.
Anyone else? Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, I think that you're going to find out that VNT easement and it's, my, my concern is the VNT group had one easement, but when they did the land acquisition, Mr. Serpa retained another easement for the VNT to do some other different things and I think that might be still out there because I don't know if the VNT actually exercised the option to purchase that.
Originally was possibly to put the terminal down there, right? They were gonna, the train would come down in there? Anything else for recommendations for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rushwin.
I would just like to go on record saying that I, I believe that the fence or the gate at its present location is the optimal location for a gate to protect both the interests of the property owner and the city's interest in the recreation lands beyond that.
Right, because it's right there where you first have to access off the main road, so otherwise they go down and just go down and around it or whatever. All right.
You can ask me to continue to investigate if you want.
Based on the information, would, would you continue this item and, and work with the applicant, et cetera, to, and bring back with some more investigation answers, et cetera? Thank you. Moving on, I think we, item E dash 14, for possible action discussion and possible action regarding a request to amend the existing special use permit U dash 79 dash 25, drop rate of concrete batch plant and hot plant operation and to remove earth products so as to modify condition number four to allow for the gate closure from dusk to dawn on property located at 7400 Brunswick Canyon Road, APN 008 dash 531 dash 45. Deja vu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request to amend special use permit U 79 dash 25 to allow the gate to be closed from dusk to dawn. As I noted earlier in the last item, condition four currently states in part, public recreation access through the subject property undefined roadways must not be restricted. Staff is recommending more specific language that cites exact time so that there isn't disagreement on interpretation. The city also has a reclaimed water main in the road, so as to ensure access, staff is recommending an easement for the reclaimed water main to be recorded prior to the gates being secured. Right now, the Public Works has access to this pipeline, we need to make sure that we retain that access. Also, Public Works, Parks and Rec and the Sheriff's Office almost be given a gate key or a code so that they're able to get through the gate at any time. I do want to change the wording in condition 18, I, I wrote too much, I didn't mean to write that much. So it should say in the first sentence that the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Access, the first sentence should read, Carson State Sheriff's Office must be provided a gate key or a code so to be able to open the gate at any time, period. The sentence should sit in there, it shouldn't talk about the affluent pipeline. I've had the question from some commissioners, can the planning commission consider this amendment to the special use permit given the ongoing investigation? The answer is yes, you can. This is an amendment to the special use permit. Again, like every special use permit you see, you look at the seven required findings of fact. Can those findings of fact be met? I've talked to folks in the Sheriff's Office, I've talked to Parks and Rec, I've talked to Public Works, I have comments from all of these agencies. Nobody is disagreeing with the idea of having the gate closed at night. They, there's just requests for clarification and you'll see that in the proposed language staff's put before you. And there's also requests to make sure that folks who need to access the area, specifically Sheriff's Office, Parks and Rec because they are landowner in there, Public Works because they need to get to their pipeline, that they have access and they have codes that work. Staff can make the seven findings of fact in the affirmative and, but we can with the conditions as crafted in the staff report. Absent those conditions, we cannot make the findings in the affirmative. So staff is recommending approval of this special use permit and I'm happy to answer questions. The applicant Jeremy Page and Zach Jones are present and Zach did the application and if you have questions for them or I can answer questions.
Questions for staff? Mr. Preston?
Sorry, I just remembered there's something else in that canyon, that the GSA has their water meter to tell us whether, what the CFI is so that we can figure out how to run the, the river. And so that is just beyond the gate, it's to the, east of the gate. And I think they also have one under Brunswick, under the, under the old bridge, but they do have two, two, I don't know, what, what gauges there.
Flow meters.
What is that agency called?
I think, I think it's the GSA, is it the?
USGS.
USGS? Okay, thank you.
I think that's the flow meters to regulate when the water's rising lower.
Then I'll, I'll recommend an additional condition that the staff will consult with the USGS to determine if there's a need to access their equipment and if so, to ensure that the gate doesn't obstruct their access to their equipment.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rushwin.
Does allowing the Sheriff's Department, does it, would that also include all public safety like fire and to have access?
The fire department uses a NOX box and there is a condition in here that they do need to provide the NOX box for the sheriff, I mean, I'm sorry, for the fire department. The sheriff, what they do is they get a code and they give the code to dispatch. So if somebody needs to go there, dispatch can, can give them the code to get in.
One other item, on item, on 21, condition 21, we got a couple misspellings there. It should be exit the property rather than exist the property and signed instead of singed.
Who's, is it designated in here who's responsible for the cost of whatever modifications need to be made to the private gate that were already modified by the city or?
It would be the applicant's responsibility to comply with the conditions of approval.
Other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward again, please? Having, having seen this, are you comfortable with the 23 conditions of approval?
I am.
You are?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
Mr. Doris?
All right, so given, given that this has been your intent, the business's intent, to keep the gate closed from dusk till dawn for the entirety of this big report and there's all these instances of forgetting and mistakes happening and three weekends, whole weekends it being closed and other days it being closed, what, I guess I'm, I'm wondering how you plan on avoiding the mistakes if, if, if this is approved, you know, and, and avoiding these, any sort of closures during what should be open hours?
So if, if this is approved or not, we're going to be very direct with management about what they're allowed to do and not to do. I mean, some of this was, was decisions that, you know, our, our plant manager made when he was fixing the roads and, I mean, it was, I don't know, a month ago when we had a lot of rains and it was really bad and he, he shut it, he called Artistic and said, hey, I need this shut for the weekend and he was wrong. If he would have asked me, I would have said, don't do it, right? You know, grade the roads after the, after it's done raining. But he made that decision and, and we'll be very clear with these guys going forward that here's the agreement that we have, you know, if we do dusk to dawn, it's dusk to dawn and there is no shutting if it's, if it's raining or whatever it is. I mean, and, you know, and if USGS needs to have access at nighttime, of course, we give it to them, we give it to them anytime and if there's responsible members of the community that want to contact us and say, hey, we need to be out there at nighttime, I mean, I don't think we'd have an issue with, with, you know, people asking and, and going outside that if it was okay with the, with the city. I mean, we, we're not trying to restrict, we're just trying to, you know, be safe, maintain the safety. So, sorry, to answer your question is we would just make sure that our, our whole team understands that it's dusk to dawn, there is no exceptions.
Well, and probably recommend for, if you just follow the schedule, you know, for your summer, spring, fall, I wouldn't delineate too much from that because if someone is back in there, you'll have, they can get out because you're going to have a system where the gate will open.
And it currently works that way.
Right, yeah. So I think that would be recommendation largely is to just go ahead if you can and just follow that schedule.
Right.
Any other questions for the?
With, with the automation, how is it, is it automated on a timer or is it a, a solar, you know, light sensor that tells them when to close?
I believe it's a photocell, so it's, I, I'm not certain, but I believe it's, it's done by actual photocell that detects the light.
So if approved, would it be up to, would it be left automated or would it be, if approved, would it be something that the employees or manager or whatever would close themselves?
No, and right now, the employees don't even know how to do it. They have to contact Artistic to do it. They don't even know how to bypass the system. So that's what happened was it was contacted and we can be very clear with Artistic that, that we're not to go off, off the schedule.
So what you're saying, basically you, you can set the gate to open at five or eight, close at 8:00 PM, open at 7:00 AM, whatever.
It's a photocell, so when it gets dark, it automatically closes.
Anyway, it can be set up, you, no one has to go out there and open it, close it.
Actually, it can be set up either way.
It can. It can be on a timer or it can be on a photocell either way.
You can put a clock right in it.
Yep.
And it's a seven day clock and you can program it and it'll just open and close the gate whenever.
Right.
Just like your sprinkler system.
Exactly.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Did you ask, did you ask?
Yes, he was, yeah, he was happy, you were comfortable with the condition, yes, that's that first. Public comment on this item?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Ben Johnson, Deputy District Attorney for the record. I just wanted to make a point of clarification on condition number 16 regarding the easement. I just wanted to clarify, the city's actually purchased an easement for the utilities through the condemnation process. It initiated over 20 years ago, but for one reason or another, I don't know why, but it was never finalized, so that's what's going to occur in that is that it'll be the finalization of recording the actual easement. So I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that this wasn't any kind of quid pro quo or, you know, trying to extract it from them, but the city did pay for it.
From what I understand, they went through the process and then it just didn't get filed at the very end. Thank you. Again, and no public comment on this side and we can bring it back for further discussion or a motion.
The investigation will stay open because there certainly are, what you're doing is you're modifying the condition number four, basically, and there still is the wording in there, it just is in a different condition that they can't restrict public access for recreation. I made sure those exact words stayed in there and then there's qualifications. So to the extent it operates outside that qualified language, it would be, it would be a continued violation.
Having considered that Parks and Rec and everybody else had seen the conditions and are all comfortable with them, I'll, I'll make a recommendation. I move to approve an amendment to special use permit U dash 79 dash 25 to allow for restrict, to allow for a restriction to public access based on the ability to make the required findings subject to the conditions of approval.
One second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's a modification to condit, to the wording, condition eight, 18, sorry, as I worded, so the first sentence will say the Sheriff's Office must be provided key.
The Sheriff's Office must be provided the gate.
Correct.
To be able to open the gate at any time.
Correct.
Dropping the easement for reclaimed water.
Correct. Condition 21, the not, the corrected language as identified by Commissioner S. Wine and consideration of an additional condition of approval, that the staff will contact USGS to identify if there's a need for them to access equipment and if so, to ensure that they have access through the gate.
Would there be anyone else that might possibly need access or whatever? Probably not.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner Doris.
Would it also, would the commission also be, agree that maybe we should put some sort of fail-safe in there, like, you know, if we get three complaints of the gate not being up, or open?
I don't think that's necessary. If they're following, it would end up, they can, the same thing, the special use permit, he still has the investigation going on, the old and it could start another one on whatever. So I don't think anything additional is needed there, is it? All right. Further, we have a motion and second, all in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six in favor, Commissioner Doris opposed. Thank you. Staff reports, non-action items.
Yeah, just, there were no items at the May Board of Supervisors that went through the planning commission, so I have nothing to report on any of those prior items. Coming up in June, it'll be not as, not as large of an agenda, but the tentative subdivision map will, will be coming back that was originally on this agenda, so that's the tentative subdivision map at the end of Railroad Drive. Growth Management will be doing the annual growth management, that's where we establish the number of residential allocations for the following years, along with some other specifics regarding that. Special use, couple of special use permits, one for a booster pump station and one for an RV storage and, RV and boat storage facility on Airport Road just to the west of the corporate yard. And if anybody has any questions on any of those items, you can contact us at the Planning Division. That's all I have.
Commissioner reports or comments? Seeing none? Public comment? Seeing none? Take a motion to adjourn.
So am I.
We're adjourned, thank you.